I'm gonna call the meeting to order first. We'll call the meeting in order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Rashia, would you like to do a roll call?
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Present.
Councilmember Dan Han?
Present.
Council President Cox?
Present.
Councilmember Stubble?
Here.
Councilmember Josh Han?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item two approval of the agenda. Melinda?
I do have a motion to amend the agenda. And that amendment would include moving, I would move to amend the agenda and add eleven, to number eleven, new business. And that would be to add L, approve and authorize the mayor to sign contract number two four five zero three zero zero, ARPA Health and Human Services thirteen ninety-four, Amendment One, decreasing the total award amount to one million four hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars. And also add M, contract number two four five three seven zero zero zero, ARPA Water and Sewer Grant eleven zero five, Amendment One, increasing the total grant award amount by one million seventy-four thousand three hundred thirteen dollars. And that's all the amendments.
I got a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve as amended.
I'll give it a second.
Second.
A motion, Councilman White, second, by Councilman Larson, to approve the agenda as presented. I'm gonna call for the question, Councilman Jay Hong.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Okay, moving on, we're gonna move right into a public hearing. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three, granting franchise request of corporation, DBA, CenturyLink QC on behalf of itself and its affiliates, CenturyLink cooperate and maintain telecommunications systems and systems of the city of Lander. I'm gonna open the public hearing, six oh two. Hey, you wanna introduce a reading? Is there more to it than what I just read? But read it again.
It's a fairly lengthy document. It should be in your packet. It's one of the franchise agreements that Lance and the franchise attorney are working on to bring up in line with the rest of the franchises that the city has going on. Hunter, do you have more information to add?
Questions from the council? And public comment on this item? Okay, since there isn't none, close the public hearing at six oh four, close. We'll have communication from the floor. Please approach the microphone, state your full name for the record. This meeting is, and comments are electronically recorded. All comments best be limited to three minutes.
Test, test.
Come on, Chanel Han, Lander, Wyoming. It never ceases to amaze me that the city administration, council, and mayor still are pushing their own personal agendas instead of doing the will of the people who pay their salaries and vote them into their office to be the voice of the constituents. It is obvious that it is easy for you to spend other people's money. The outrage over the vote to spend forty-five thousand dollars on a party for a business who has publicly said that they have eighty-two million in assets has been loudly heard. It was said that people coming to this event would spend money on local hotel rooms. I would like to see that documentation. During this event, let's take a look at who is using the free camping at City Park and on the mountain by Wild Iris. Is this party open to all of the Fremont County residents? Just a thought, maybe this should take the place of the pig roast and save the city some money. It is also easy for you to vote on issues that negatively affect members of the community that won't affect you. The new building codes will not reduce the cost of housing. Materials and construction costs have not gone down. The planning commission didn't even discuss the goal of how many people they want to move into Lander. You need to start taking care of the needs of the existing residents first and bring in some kind of industry that will pay a decent wage so people can afford housing. The city where we just spent Thanksgiving in 2010 had ten thousand people. In 2024, there are over forty-nine thousand people. They're in the process of tearing up beautiful farmland with deep, dark, rich soil for housing. Those of us who are longtime residents are discussing that you are putting people who might move here over the needs of current residents. Citizens have voiced their needs and concerns, and you do not listen. Clean water, reliable sewer that doesn't back up into their homes, and streets that do not have potholes that damage their vehicles. Start being fiscally responsible. I will say it again, as I said at the last meeting, needs over wants. Thank you.
Communication from the floor? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Kathleen Avril. I live here in Lander. Tonight, the city council is gonna vote on a measure that's going to irreparably and irreversibly change Lander. So I just wanna leave people with few tidbits that you can think about while that's happening. Today, I was told that there are no items to be voted on tonight that are being reconsidered and rescinded. I do wanna point out, and I'm going to quote statute fifteen one one seventeen, ordinances, amendment, and appeal. Quote, amendments and repeals of ordinances or sections thereof shall be by ordinance. An amending ordinance shall set forth the entire ordinance or section as amended. No vote of the governing body may be reconsidered or rescinded at any meeting unless there are as many members present as there were when the vote was originally taken. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't interpret this statute, but I can read, even as it's poorly this, this is written. I understand this to mean that ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight is amending by repealing and replacing Title Four zoning of the Lander City Code as indicated by its title, and I quote, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, repealing City of Lander Municipal Code Title Four zoning, Sections four one one through four fifteen nine in its entirety, and replacing it with Title Four, planning and zoning. This action, to me, falls under the above-mentioned statute wherein it is stated that no vote of the governing body may be reconsidered or rescinded at any meeting unless there are as many members present as there were when the vote was originally taken. To me, that means there must be as many city council members present at the voting on ordinance twenty twenty-four zero eight as there were at either the passage of the original zoning code or the passage of ordinance twelve thirty-six in 2020 for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero eight to pass. If there are not, then the remaining council members cannot vote to override a previous council's passage of the ordinance being amended. Lander citizens who don't want Lander to become Jackson Hole need two council members to remove themselves from the chambers during the vote on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero eight to prevent its passage. Thank you.
Charles Woolwine. In Wyoming, for every one thousand residents, there are some two hundred and forty-five firearms guns. Among the fifty states, that statistic causes Wyoming to be ranked number one, and by default, possibly number one in the world. With that said, sadly, the residents of Wyoming at the same time experience an inordinate amount of depression, abuse, sadness, addiction, and hopelessness. You say, hey, Dr. Woolwine, how can you make such a terrible claim? Well, I'm pretty certain I am right because regarding suicide, Montana is ranked number one, Alaska number two, and sadly, Wyoming is ranked number three. That's right, when it comes to the rate of suicide, Wyoming is ranked ahead of forty-seven other states, which needless to say, include cities like Los Angeles, Las Vegas, San Francisco, Chicago, Miami, and New York. Wow. Now, you might be thinking, how could suicide be such a problem in Wyoming? Well, when you take a pile of one hundred forty-three thousand five hundred and seventy firearms and mix them together with an overwhelming amount of depression, abuse, sadness, addiction, and hopelessness, and then soak the whole mess with one million four hundred thousand gallons of alcohol, enough to fill two six hundred and sixty thousand gallon Olympic-sized swimming pools, well, there it is, suicide. And guess what? In seventy-five percent of all of Wyoming's attempted suicides, a firearm is used. But then you declare, hey, Dr. Woolwine, we got nothing to do with that. We don't encourage our citizens to drink. Why, if they choose to drink, that's on them. We got nothing to do with that. Well, first of all, you allowed two alcohol factories to be built so close together that if you, if you can stand, you can stand at one and almost chunk a beer bottle through the window of the other one. Secondly, liquor licenses are passed out around here like candy from a Pez dispenser, and that's no exaggeration. I checked, and a Pez dispenser holds twelve pieces of candy. Thirdly, how does Lander kick off the summer season? Well, that's right, with an alcohol festival that is known all over the world as the best little brew fest in the West, to which, by the way, you are not allowed to bring your dog, but you are encouraged to bring your children. Thank you.
Any more communication from the floor?
My name is Chad Casselik here in Lander. I was here at the last council meeting. My wife told me that there's a master plan, twenty twenty-four master plan survey that's being pushed to ground for people to share their, their concerns about what's being voted on tonight. I don't know where that came from, who started that, and the city government, but to do that and then to vote prior to those inputs being put in, I think is bad form, absolutely bad form. I would recommend that you table this tonight until the outcome of that survey. And that's, that's the first thing I'd say. Second thing I have to say is that at the very end of last city council meeting, Mrs. White, you specifically said at the end of last city council meeting, and I'll paraphrase, that this is about tax revenue. It's not about low-income housing, building low-income housing, making that housing available to people. You can go back and roll the tape back, and that's what you brought up. I was a leader of Marines for twenty years. The people you're trying to take care of by solving this problem are my Lance Corporals and privates that I took care of in combat. I have a strong affinity for those people that don't make a lot of money and need to get on the ladder to have a better life. So you had an advocate on your side because that's where I come from. And I feel like you pulled a rug out from under me as a citizen of this city by, at the very end of your, of your arguments for, to say, hey, if we wanna fix our streets, we gotta have more. So you took an advocate who was on your side, and you pushed me to the other side, and I'm very upset about that, about not being honest about that. You know, make an argument, stick to it. Don't tell me one thing and then switch argument to the other side. That's very upsetting to me. I, I felt ashamed of what I saw last week, you know? I was very disappointed with that. My final comment to y'all is that at the end, I came up and talked to the mayor, and I, and he asked me to share my comments and my observations, and I told you I would, and I apologize that I didn't. I was very upset, was very emotionally moved by what I saw last week for the last city council meeting because I didn't participate in city governments for twenty years because I was fighting overseas on nine combat deployments, you know? I didn't get a chance to participate with my fellow, fellow citizens in the way that I'm trying right now. I was fighting on behalf of every one of you that I don't know, and I'll lay my life down today for you even though I don't know you. And to be treated the way we were last time was very upsetting to me. It was the day after Veterans Day. On Veterans Day, everybody wanted me to be a part of this community. Everybody did. The night I came to that meeting, people wouldn't look me in the eye. They wouldn't respond to what I said, you know? Tell me I'm wrong. I'm a Marine, I can handle that. Argue with me, I can handle that. You know, but don't tell me you care about me, and then ignore me the next day. Be honest. Like, be honest. Make me proud, all right? That's what I asked for. Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Soon as there's nobody, we'll go ahead and move forward. Then I called. Margaret Appleby up here, see me in the front. Can you come on up? Oh, you gotta come down there, you gotta come up. Maker? Well, it's not real far, but I'll come, I'll come down and see you in a minute. Go ahead, Melinda.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. How are you? Good. This is a proclamation in recognition of Margaret Appleby Day. Whereas Margaret Appleby, a beloved member of our community, will celebrate her ninetieth birthday on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, you're not supposed to say that publicly.
We do.
And whereas Margaret has dedicated countless, countless hours to volunteering, making significant contributions to the well-being of our city through her selfless service, unwavering commitment, and inspiring spirit. And whereas her involvement in numerous community organizations, events, and initiatives has enriched the lives of many, leaving a lasting impact on residents of all ages. And whereas Margaret's kindness, generosity, and dedication have set a remarkable example of what it means to give back to one's community, embodying the values of compassion, leadership, and civic responsibility. And whereas her legacy of volunteerism and service has made Lander a better place for all who live, work, and visit here. Whereas the city of Lander wishes to express its deepest appreciation for Margaret Appleby's decades of dedication and to celebrate her extraordinary contributions. Now, therefore, I, Melinda K. Cox, on behalf of Monty Richardson, Mayor of Lander, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, as Margaret Appleby Day in honor of her ninetieth birthday. I encourage all citizens to join in honoring her exceptional service to our community by performing an act of service in her honor. In, or, that is, that's the conclusion of that proclamation. Thank you.
As Margaret was getting her picture taken up here, if you didn't hear, she told me, I've got a meeting to go to, so she's, she's busy for our community. All right, we're gonna go right into mayor and council updates. Uh, Councilman Larson?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Councilwoman White?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things here. So the senior citizen, our center continues to do really well. In the, see, the previous month, they provided over forty-one hundred meals to Lander, Lander area residents, which is really impressive. Hoping to get a partnership between the senior center and the Alpine Science Institute Farm Program, since some of their funding for their meals is restrictive and that can only be used for food that's produced and manufactured in the U.S. And so this would be, you know, it's hard to, like, find what, U.S.-grown tomatoes in the summertime. You know, a lot of produce comes from out of country, so hopefully that's an opportunity for a good local partnership for them. They are not doing the cookie fundraiser this year, but they are starting to get plans afoot for another Wimpy Burger fundraiser, so stay tuned for that. It's not gonna be right away, but they're, they're pretty psyched about making that happen, which is pretty neat. The wreaths across America, the placement is this Saturday, I believe, and thanks to all the Lander residents who were, contributed that to make it so that every veteran's burial site can have a wreath. That's pretty awesome, and of course, thanks to the volunteers for that. Thank you also to the volunteers who made Light Up Lander happen. That was fantastic. It's like, it seems like every year, it just gets more and more involved and more folks coming out, which is really neat. And while I know it's been a while ago that this was put on, the high school kids did an amazing job with the Sound of Music production. I was so impressed with the effort that they put into it, thought they just did a phenomenal job. Lastly, in terms of air service, the really better-than-good news is we are very likely to top twenty-one thousand employment for the year, which is a number I don't know that we've ever seen quite that high. The downside is our average ticket price continues to be lower than what was anticipated for that, so it means we, we'll still have to pay some on the revenue guarantee, and both FAST and the state are committed to influencing that as best we can for that. So a reminder, the state pays sixty percent, the local matches forty percent, and we know that all of us would, would do better if we could just nudge up, not hugely, but just a little bit and make that a little more amenable for folks. That is all my updates, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hong?
Thank you, Mayor. For four years, the Lander council and mayor have pushed the narrative on how the citizens' half-cent money should be spent on economic development. The people were not happy with the results, and this tax failed to stay alive this year. Council, the people are speaking to you, and you are not listening. You're pushing the narrative with the Title Four zoning change? This has been a sixty-eight-year battle against the citizens of Lander. Not all of them, but a lot of them. They do not like the changes, they did not like the changes back then, and they do not like the changes now. You're not listening to the majority of Lander. These, these zoning changes are not what Lander needs. They don't fix our town, or they don't fix the people. What Lander needs is a mayor and a council that listens to the majority, not the few, and does the right thing, votes these changes down. The people voted the tax down, next, they're gonna be voting people out of office. Remember that. The citizens deserve better, and I, as things stands, I'm gonna vote no. And, and one thing I wanna add to this, we, we went down the trail of changing the zoning, and we never took a look at the, the building codes. They go hand in hand, but we're stepping in front of the horse to, to vote on zoning because that's what everybody wants, or what this council wants. I don't know where this is gonna go tonight, but the one thing that needs to be done is, and what should have been, should have been done before this ever happened, and that is, we need to take a look at the, at the building codes and, and make, make sure everything's in place. But I don't, the, I haven't talked to anybody that is, is for this, and I guess we'll see what happens. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. Lita will be reviewing the MOU, I believe, at the meeting tomorrow, although I had my days confused. I will not be at the meeting, I have to travel for a medical appointment, so I don't know if, Regine, are you planning on being at that meeting? No? Well, it's a little last minute, but you're always invited. But I will also let them know, they, they'll have a quorum there, so that won't be a big issue. I do wanna draw attention to the city council members of our liaison positions that will be coming up. It's, it's general practice that we change those every two years. It would also be my suggestion as the council president that we vote in a new council president, and that we change that every two years. We have six able-bodied individuals up here, and that should be a position that everybody has an opportunity, if they're interested, to sit in. I want the citizens of Lander to know that there will be a couple of tournaments, basketball tournaments, arriving to town this week on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. That means that it'll be an extensive amount of traffic, buses. I think there's eight additional teams here this weekend, and I believe eight next weekend as well. I could be wrong on that, don't, don't take that as fact, but that's an estimate. That, that is a lot, it'll, it's great, it's always good to have kids running around, eating food here. They really don't, they go to the supermarket, but occasionally they'll go out to dinner. And, well, and I'll tell you why, they can only use nine dollars for dinner. Now, that's, that's just not enough to feed anybody anywhere, but that'll be a good time. And I am sorry that I missed Lander, Light Up Lander, I did attend another parade in another community, and that was enjoyable and different, but also enjoyable. So I thank you, and I look forward to the rest of the meeting agenda.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stubble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, first, thank you to everyone who's come here tonight, and I wish I could say that before some folks left. But we're always grateful to have you offer your ideas, your research, bring your perspectives and opinions, whether or not you speak them here at the podium or email them or speak with us in-person meetings beforehand. So it's, it takes a lot out of your busy days to engage with us, and I'm really grateful for what I learned from each of you when you do. I know it would feel awkward that when you give comment here tonight, we simply listen, and we don't respond. It feels a little awkward from my side, too, frankly. There's some good reasons for why we do that, but it's a choice that's not without impact. So I do want to take the privilege, Mayor, if I can, before my liaison updates, to address one comment tonight, offer some context. We are seeking feedback on it through a master planning survey. That survey is open until, I believe, the fifteenth of this week, and it does have, I'm just pulling it up, some fairly the fifteenth of this week, and it does have, I'm just pulling it up, some fairly broad questions. The sequencing here can look a little awkward because it has housing-related questions, and we are making a final vote tonight. But the master planning survey is also looking at a variety of other priorities for this council and for this community, from transportation to economic development, parks and rec. In fact, there's parks and rec in the main survey, and then a specific survey for parks and rec. So please do both, if that's an area of interest for you. And I agree, Mr. Cassidy, I think it, it would have been ideal for us to get those inputs as another layer of data before this decision tonight, and it didn't sync up. The questions around housing, I at least take some comfort in, have a broader array of solutions and policies that I hope we also continue to consider beyond whatever happens tonight with Title IV. Thank you for raising that, and I hope those of you who haven't taken it, do take it. It's on our website and Facebook, and it's very fast. We look forward to hearing from you on that. Mr. Mayor, I have one update from our liaison position with the Propoja Conservation District. So I don't know that this has been covered in the news. I could have missed it. Oh, the press isn't here. But the elections, I wanted to report back because there were several write-in candidates for empty seats on the Conservation District, and so just wanted to share it just in case others miss this, too. Kind of funny, Bailey Brennan, who was an incumbent, but that didn't file in time to be on the ballot, won the write-in nominations for two seats. Bailey does an excellent job. And so she won both the rural and at-large write-in nominations. She accepted the rural nomination, and the runner-up in the write-ins, Archie Chant, has accepted the appointment by the Conservation District for the at-large seat. There's one more step of ratification for write-ins for that board. The Department of Agriculture will need to accept those appointments by the board itself. It's kind of funny, next step, but that's usually, I guess, fairly routine. Once the board makes that nomination, and it's clear those folks have the write-in number of votes. So Bailey Brennan, Archie Chant, we expect will be the two, well, not new for Bailey, but Archie would be new to that Conservation District Board. One reason why there was an empty seat for the Conservation District Board is because a longstanding member, Arlen Lancaster, declined to run for another term. Arlen was elected since 2011, so he has, he has done his service to the Conservation District, and the Conservation District wanted to recognize that. They nominated him for a statewide award through the Conservation District Association, and he won that. It's called the Darrell Walker Outstanding Supervisor of the Year. And from that submission, I just want to read quickly to recognize Arlen's deep commitment here. Quote, "Arlen Lancaster's exceptional leadership, deep knowledge, and unwavering commitment to conservation make him an outstanding candidate for the Darrell Walker Outstanding Supervisor of the Year Award. His contributions to the Propoja Conservation District and the broader conservation community have been profound." I would heartily second that, and congratulations to Arlen Lancaster as well. If you see him, give him a big old pat on the back for his thirteen years on the Conservation District and for winning that award. Mayor, that is all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Jay Hahn.
Oh, yeah, I don't have a whole lot to say. Ear got bent off about the vote on the half-percent sales tax for Knowles. It was also brought to my attention, and I don't know for a fact, I don't know if it's a conflict of interest that one of the council members worked for or does work for Knowles and voted. You know, I don't know if that money's been passed out already or not, but I, I think it, I don't know. It made us look really bad, and people are not happy about that. And it was brought to my attention that that's why the half-percent did not pass is because of stuff like that. You know, and this isn't just Lander. This is countywide. So obviously, you know, it isn't people just in the city that are, you know, talking about not liking the half-percent sales tax. It was countywide. But I don't know about the voting stuff, how the conflict of interest would work in that. So I guess that would be a question.
Adam, would you like to address that question real quick?
I, without knowing some of the specifics, I really can't address it right now. I'm happy to talk about it in more detail after the meeting, so I can discuss this in a little bit more detail at a later meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Hey, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on right up to staff reports. Chief.
I don't have a whole lot. You'll see that our foreign patrol cars are all done now and on the streets. You'll also see that we have a new pattern for design on the sides. I cleaned it up a little bit. I've never been a fan of stripes. I want us to be police officers, not Southwest Airlines. But that, and then also in the same token, I, I really don't want our cars to be billboards. I mean, they're easily observable, so you know they're police, so they're not hidden. But besides that, you know what? It's a streamlined design. So it's our first stage. We like it right now, but just so you know, the more we look at it, we might modify it a little bit. But that's all I have now, unless you guys have questions.
Questions for Chief? None. Thank you. Hunter.
I got a lot of irons and a lot of fires, but happy to answer any questions that I may be able to have answers for.
Questions for Hunter.
I do, Mayor. I just want to follow up with the lift request from the Lander Girls Softball and the City of Lander meeting with the school district. Have we had an opportunity to do that yet?
Yep, we met with the school, was that Thursday of last week? We have a scheduled meeting with the softball group on, on Monday, too, to discuss options, too.
Perfect. That was going to be my follow-up question if the Lander Girls Softball was included in that discussion. Okay.
Yeah, just trying to get context and get the lay of the land. I'm, I'm getting caught up on a lot of, I guess, discussions and, and applications and things I don't know much about, and just getting all caught up with it and getting everybody in the room to have the same discussions.
Okay, we did table that decision, and I know that we put a date back for that. Was that the seventh?
January fourteenth.
We tabled for January fourteenth for the vote with the intention that we'd have a work session. I don't know.
In between. Okay. Okay. Thank you. If, if the work session is not scheduled, is there, what's the communication intention through the city, for the city council to review the meeting minutes or what's discussed?
Sure. I think it may be a follow-up. I think there's a, a lot of, the softball group is going to present to the school board, it sounds like, as well. So there's a lot of, in January is their plan, is what they've said. So it sounds like there are several meetings that are still to be had. We didn't keep minutes, but we could definitely give a recap of our discussions we've had, or maybe it is gathering all interested parties together to have kind of consensus discussion as to where we're at. Not being quite savvy on Robert's rules of where we're at with table meetings and, and whatnot. I don't know what our next steps are as far as that. Happy to share all the information we're gathering with that.
Sure. I just wondered what, how that would be delivered with the holiday in place, that we won't have a work session. And then I know that they're intending to present to the school board, but that's presentation is primarily to have softball as a sanctioned high school sport. So it's a little different than the actual request that they made to the city.
Right. Yep. I think part of it comes with facilities with that as well, but maybe a report? Would that be?
That'd be fantastic. That'd be great. If we could just get that ahead of time, so that we can all have the opportunity to be with. Thank you.
Mayor, may I follow up on that?
Yes, you may.
I feel like I didn't quite get a clear photo, and Hunter might not be you. It might be Rochelle. We do, I mean, we've noticed a meeting for December seventeenth. I think with the intention that's a work session on this topic, can it be?
There hasn't been an official notice. I haven't called the meeting. It's my understanding that I don't know that all those meetings that need to take place will take place. We could, I could call one for January seventh, which is a week before the voting session, and still meet those timeframes. I'm just unclear on the timeline. Certainly, someone can call a meeting for, for January fourteenth. It's not, or I mean, December seventeenth, whatever it is. It's not too late, but I was directed that it might be premature.
Okay. Mayor, if I may. I was just confused because it's on our website, so I thought that meant it was, had been noticed. I mean, Hunter, do you think that's presumptive to do the seventeenth, that we should try for January seventh instead?
I don't think there's anything time crunch to it. I think you'll get more knowledge if you wait a little bit longer to January, to have a, to be able to make a more concise decision on that. And I'm sure the group would probably agree as, as information gets compiled, and I'll make sure that they're aware of the report or can add to the report as well, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Mayor. I think it sounds fine then to not hold the December work session on this goal, that we have enough conversations by January seventh. You know, we do have that deadline of, we tabled a funding decision for the fourteenth, so we'll need to have the information in hand to make an informed funding decision then.
And I will reach out to Ann. I didn't know that she had put the December seventeenth on our website. She does that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we just make sure everybody on the table on this on the same page. So a lot of players out there that are involved in this. So we'll just bring everybody together, move it forward, so. Okay. Regine.
Thank you, Mayor. Ann has already left, but she wanted me to thank everyone in the city departments for putting on the Light Up Lander. Like Missy said, we think it was bigger and better than last year, and there are a lot of moving parts in public works and subcontractors that make that happen. So she just wanted to say extended thank you to everyone. I don't have any other personal staff updates unless you have questions for me.
Questions for Regine? Okay, Shari.
Just a heads up that next month, we are going to advertise my position. I am retiring in twenty-six. Appointed positions aren't always desirable positions, so we don't know how long it will take, but you will see it in January.
Adam.
I don't have anything tonight unless somebody has a question for me.
Questions for Adam? None. But she only knows she took you under.
I keep trying to talk Shari into not retiring, but so far it hasn't been very successful. We have built all of our ice skating rink positions. We had a fantastic interest in that. Those obanes hopefully will have an ice rink. I don't know how successful they are at trying to build that right now. It's a little bit warm, I'm told, but hopefully it happens, and if it does, we have employees. We are also looking for an independent contractor for the groundskeeping position at the Laramie Community Center. Sorry, I said Laramie and I meant Lander, Lander Community Center. That is advertised in the newspaper. It is on the Chamber website, I believe. There is a County Ten article. It's on our social media. It is open till January ninth. All bids, proposals are due January ninth. They should be sealed and come to City Hall. They will be open publicly on January ninth at two P.M. So bids are due at two P.M., and we will open them like we do every bid or request for proposal in this courtroom. So anyone is welcome to come. And I have already spoken to some people that are interested, so hopefully the word is getting out there. Last year, this council approved a part-time temporary city office position to do photocopying, scanning, things of that nature. We were unsuccessful in any of those, in, in getting any applicants. So you'll probably see that is also out and about in the newspaper, and we have had three or four applications this time around, so that's encouraging. And then I was going to mention Shari's position, but she already mentioned that. We're still soliciting applications, too, for the seasonal snow equipment operator position, hoping to get some applicants for that as well. Any questions for me?
Questions?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
May we go back to, to your Laura?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. I should have said this immediately, but I didn't. Shari, I mean, one, I'm glad we have a year. Thank you, because it's hard to imagine doing this without you here. But can you also clarify? Councilman Josh Han raised a question about the, the Knowles funds, the distribution of the lift grants. Can you, you can probably elaborate better than I can, that those are reimbursements, so that money, your question, Councilman Han, has not gone out. Is that correct?
Um, we pay on the reimbursement method, so they would have to spend dollars before they would get reimbursed any money, so we have not cut them any checks. I, I don't see us cutting, since our event isn't until next September, I can't imagine that we'd be cutting them checks anytime shortly.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions. Let's move to the bills and claims. Can I get a motion? Second.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second?
That was my councilman, second by Councilwoman White to approve the bills and claims. There's quite a few on there. November twelfth, twenty-four, city council meeting. November twenty-sixth, city council regular minute meetings and meeting minutes. And November twenty-sixth, twenty-four, work session, mean, minutes. So then we'll have, we have seventeen approval of the airport hangars in that consent agenda. Do I have to recruit yourself from? All right. Yep. Good. So I got a motion and a second. Then call for the question, or do I have questions? Done? Call for the question. Councilman Jay Hahn.
Yes.
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 Moving on. Our new business, actually, now it's not an old business. Approved third and final reading of ordinance twenty, twenty-four dash eight, repealing the save under Mr. Powell's code, Title IV zoning, one dash, four dash one dash one to four dash fifteen dash nine, in its entirety, replacing it with Title IV planning and zoning. Can I get a motion or a second? If you want to have a discussion. Can I get a second?
Second.
That was my councilman, second by Councilman Stube. Discussion.
I do. Oh, go ahead.
Councilman.
Oh, thank you. I do have a couple of comments that I want to make prior to my vote. And that is, there were some questions that I needed answered through the zoning process that I don't feel, you know, swayed me in the direction of a, a yes vote. And that is, if rezoning, how the side, how it affects the market, how it affects consumers, how it affects the mobility in response to zoning, that means how it affects our, our community members in response to zoning, if they have the ability to move essentially. And how it affects and/or if we have control over the cost of materials. And I'm, this is layman's terms. There's lots of big words we're not going to use, or I'm not going to. And then the rent-seeking behavior. So when I looked at zoning in relationship to those questions or those topics, one of the things that, oh, and interest rates, of course, we, we have no control over. There, there were two things in rental seeking behavior. Short-term rentals have come up as a source of contention or a source of discussion. There's no good indication that short-term rentals either affect positively or negatively zoning. There's no correlation. We do have a significant amount of Airbnbs or short-term rentals in our community. They seem to rent well, and they seem to provide a need in our community. What we don't have is long-term rentals, but that is not necessarily affected by short-term rentals. So short-term rentals, some sometimes probably would sit empty and not be rented to a long-term renter anyway, just due to wear and tear, et cetera. So that doesn't necessarily impact zoning. What we do have is a high cost, average cost of homes in Lander currently of all the houses on the market. When you take out the four highest-priced houses, which are all over a million dollars, the average cost of house, housing, or to buy a house is four-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. That equates to approximately twenty-eight hundred dollars a month in a mortgage payment. So the problem that I had that I couldn't resolve is when our constituents are affected by zoning, they are not able to move, because in order to sell their house, they'd have to sell it high, buy a higher-priced home, and then oftentimes having a mortgage when they didn't, or a much higher mortgage. This has been a difficult process for me personally, because I know that lack of housing has impacted our community negatively. We don't, we're unable to keep young professionals in our community. They can't afford housing, but honestly, they can't afford rent. Um, but honestly, they can't afford rent either. Uh, you know, I worked, most of you know, in the treatment court field and the juvenile justice field for twenty-three years in this county. And we were tasked oftentimes with helping participants find housing. You know, get employed, have a livable wage. Our wages in Lander specifically have gone up a little bit. Um, that's encouraging. But they're not offset. And so the the problem currently is um the things that we can control like zoning, don't impact attainable housing for our community and for our citizens. And that's an unfortunate thing, because I I cannot negate the work that's been done on the zoning. There's been a lot of good work, a lot of thoughtful work. Um, you know, we do sometimes need increased revenue in our community. But but we also need to be mindful of taking care of the things that we have control over. And sometimes that's met with resistance. Um, you know, I don't ever like in response to some comments made, I don't ever really like attacks on council members or staff. Because there's never ill will, in my opinion, but that's where I sit and that's how I view the world. I think that everybody does the best they can and supports what they can. Um, and then it's our job to delve into that and come together and make decisions. And sometimes we don't always agree. But it's never personal, not for me. Um, and I don't, I could say that for everybody sitting here. And so I think that while I think sometimes constituents get frustrated of the process or of decisions that are made, you know, it's not because it's self-serving. And so I I hope that uh we understand that as we move forward, whatever happens with zoning, I wanted to make it known that um, because of the things that I've talked about uh today, that I would not be supporting zoning, rezone, or adopting um, the final reading.
Councilman Hong?
I'd like to make a comment on the uh the long-term, short-term Airbnb's. Um, I I don't, the information that I've got, it does affect inventories. It 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 uh, it affects home buyers, um, if they're renting, um, maybe not so much, but I think the zoning we have in place right now is working just fine for Lander. I don't think that we need to uh move this title four. It I think it's too extreme. Um, we just got back from Texas and and we got to see a a a lot of different new construction north of Dallas. And uh I don't, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna do, if you go down this trail, it's not gonna do, you 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 may you may put people in some some units, but uh I I think the uh, I think the impact on the citizens of Lander I think it's gonna be greater than than your goal of of trying to put somebody in a in 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 some kind of living space, but uh once we move, I mean, if if you move this forward, uh, it's probably not going to uh, it's probably gonna, not gonna go backwards. So um, I I I hope you really think about what you have, because what we have right now, uh, we're building we're building thirty, thirty-five foot uh apartments. I just don't see any need to to do forty foot. I I just, I just don't see where it's, that's, you know, we we can't come up with a number on even how many people you want to bring into town. So, I mean, I I I don't understand this, to tell you the truth, but anyway, I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
More communication? Hey, Josh?
Yeah, whether we like to hear it or not, the uh, the infrastructure in this town isn't prepared for what you're wanting to do. You know, we've got a lot of problems. We need to get a handle on the issues we have currently so that our town will stay a nice little town. You know, and we can keep making that better and making that better. And, you know, possibly later on, way in the future or something, then yeah, changes do happen. I just don't think now's the time. I think it'll create a lot more problems for the city itself than than what it's worth. I mean, obviously, our streets are in disrepair. Uh, our water and sewer isn't top-notch. It's, you know, there's people that I talk to still that are having water sewer back up into their houses off of Fifth Street and and uh on the south side. And uh, you know, I think we step back instead of rushing into stuff, take our time, fix the things that need worked on. And and so the city can support a higher population. That's, that's all I got, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stubble?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's maybe the first time you've called on me before I've It's a bit of a surprise for both of us. I mean, there's, there is so much to weigh in the decision, so much to say, so I'm gonna try to be um succinct. I think, you know, thank you to the council members who have engaged in this debate. Thank you so much to the Planning Commission, of course, who put hours and hours into researching policy recommendations. Um, seeking feedback on them, modifying for the direction we gave and um and then coming back to us. So they've certainly done incredible work, an amount of work. Uh, and then, of course, y'all who weighed in in a variety of fashions, um, it certainly had an impact, and and I think we've taken it seriously. I don't see this amendment to Title Four to be the only solution, and far from it, for the housing supply issues that we face. Uh, what I'm struggling with and and why I'm still a yes vote is that there's so few things the city can actually have control over uh around our supply or around addressing the housing issues more broadly, and this is one of them. And I I just feel committed to taking a bite of an apple, even if it's um only one small bite, and it's not the only bite we're gonna need to take. Um, I do feel uh proud, though it's been difficult, that we've amended this ordinance according to input that we've received. It's it's a very different ordinance tonight uh from what it was. And in fact, that made me question uh for a period of time of where my vote would land as well as have we actually amended to a to a level where it would not meet the stated goals any longer? Um, I think we're gonna overbuild on parking, uh, but I know there's no appetite on the council tonight to um to revisit that two parking spots per unit, so I won't propose an amendment. But when you look at the amount of parking that would lead for six units, um, you know, seven units, eight-unit buildings, it's far too much parking for the types of families will be in those, uh, for a variety of families will be in one or two-bedroom houses in those units. So I've debated the, have we changed it enough that we're not getting to the goal? I think we're making incremental progress towards that goal of increasing the variety of housing options and the housing supply in Lander. I think we've adjusted around some of the concerns around setbacks and fire. Um, and we are gonna have impacts on people in their neighborhood and their homes. Um, and I don't like that. You know, I I don't like having to uh sit with folks and say, yeah, there's a lot next to you that could be taller than it was gonna be. Um, that's not gonna feel comfortable for the home that they've bought and and that, and there's a lot of folks who could be impacted like that. And I weigh that with the experience that I hear from current residents and that I would theorize for hypothetical residents too that can't find homes in Lander. And so I uh, I'll just say it's been difficult, and I'm grateful for um, the input we've had to change and amend this. And I am committed, regardless of what happens tonight, that this is a piece, again, a bite of an apple, that we have serious housing issues in Lander that we must take seriously and investigate other solutions, including um, you know, we all know the list here, but I'm gonna say it out loud. These are often ones that have been brought to us from public input. Um, let's look into again, actual, you know, building and incentivizing the building of affordable housing with fixed rental prices. You know, we've done it once. Let's can we look at it again? Do we need to look at another senior citizen housing? Do we need to address short-term rentals and restrictions on those? Let's see what the impact actually is and do some research and then see if that's on the table. Are we a building-friendly city? You know, is there anything we can do to incentivize building um right now with what we have in our regulations? Are we restricting it unnecessarily? And and I am really excited by and disappointed we didn't have time for a recommendation in time on the concept of bulk plane uh zoning where setbacks and height are correlated and tied together. It's a new idea that came to us from public input. Um, the Planning Commission's had discussions on it, as I understand, has some interest in it, but just needed more time to research it before we could incorporate into this amendment tonight, this ordinance change. Um, so I hope that we actually, if I can ask, Planning Commission to do that, and I think that they're interested. Let's take another look at that, because I think that would really lessen those impacts of height on existing neighborhoods that have single stories that even if we don't change tonight, might have a greater height that's allowable. But if we change tonight, we'll have, you know, greater height as well. So I'd like to see bulk plane zoning uh come back to us as a policy recommendation uh as soon as possible, but that's probably six to nine months away. Uh, Mayor, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else? I call for the vote. That's Councilwoman White.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, likewise, I appreciate the incredible thought among Planning Commission, ourselves, listening to constituents and so on about this. It is challenging, and it's, to me, it speaks to the dichotomy, so the common questions or or common concerns that are voiced are um you know, we we need more services, but we don't want to pay anything for it. My kids can't afford to move here, but don't change Lander. Um, our business wants to hire people at high wages. They're not coming here because they can't afford to move here. We've seen that struggle among ourselves, and uh why why do we need to pay city employees at this rate? Like, well, so they can afford to live in Lander. Um, you know, it it's a tough one. And I know, and one of the reasons I love living in Lander too is it's like our our Mayberry of the West, right? It's this lovely, lovely town. Uh, we appreciate all that it has, and yet the challenge is our current structure and density just doesn't work financially either. And and I don't mean that as my only point in addressing this. But again, if we look at what the cost for Lincoln Street is, and you extrapolate that out to the rest of the the excuse me, the streets in town, it's over four hundred million. I mean, uh unfortunately, it, you know, the the thoughts are, can't we just build out? It's like, well, gosh, that would be great, but we can't afford our current infrastructure. So adding more miles of infrastructure only decreases that. So to me, the hope in doing these things, and it's been stated, hey, these aren't gonna move the needle a whole lot. And and you're right, in the scope of uh, changes that communities are doing to make housing more attainable, to to provide a broader options for residents to live in. Uh, these are on the the very modest end of that. Um, there are certainly more dramatic things we could do. I don't believe there's appetite for that right now, but it uh it it's a challenge. And for me, having heard this as a concern from the chamber, from young professional adults questioning their ability to make, gain a foothold in Lander, from residents wanting to be able to have more reasonably priced homes. Uh, if this can move the needle a little bit, I I believe it's an important thing to do. The reality is, Lander will change one way or another, uh either in terms of what kinds of buildings happen here, or we'll continue to make, uh, put the squeeze on our folks on lower incomes and fixed incomes. And I think that's a shame. You know, my hope is in that by creating some more uh, housing availability, we can offset some of those challenges that are happening to some of our most most challenged residents, and many of them are most treasured residents. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on that. First off, uh, um uh, the chamber did come to uh before the council, and they brought up short-term rentals and and the problems with Airbnb's and nobody, nobody says a word up here. It's just, it's just like the, like the building codes. He got tunnel vision on on zoning and all these other details, you you either want to do nothing about, or you don't want to learn what is going on. It is obvious that that most of the people that support this are not gonna be impacted. The people out here are gonna be impacted, and they are telling you that they need help and you're not listening to them. You, it nothing changes. Nothing changes. But I tell you what, I I can tell you, the people that are supporting this, this is not gonna impact them one bit. It's gonna back, it's gonna impact the people. There's gonna be the people here and and a lot of people that are that are in in Ward One. And uh, um, you know, the I hear, I hear everything but facts. Uh, I I really, I'd like to see half the stuff on paper, because I think it's easy to it's easy, easy to talk to people and tell them things. But, you know, facts, these facts, I've been talking into short-term rentals and all this, that they, they're, it affects inventories. We've got a hundred and twenty-five in town, the last I checked. I beg the council, we need to put a cap on this. Nobody wants to listen to that, because you want everything. You want everything. You you want to keep the that, and you want to do every other thing, and you don't want to listen to the 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 people. And I tell you what, one day it's gonna make a difference, because I tell you what, they are, they're, they're not happy about half the stuff, and they're gonna, they're gonna show you down the trail when they vote. So anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any else? Call for a question, Councilman Larson?
Mayor, this is the toughest decision that I've uh made in a long, long time, and I'm voting no. And uh, it's going one hundred percent, again, everything that I feel and everything that I've researched, and uh the good that I think that this will do. But uh talking with the the people in Ward One, they don't want this. There we are.
Councilwoman White?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Most of who else?
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to point out that in anticipation, and this being the third reading, and that I was going on vacation, that the paper may report tomorrow that it passed. I will send a retraction showing that it failed immediately.
Okay, thank you.
I was being overly efficient. Well, apparently I'm not doing a very good job of saving, so.
You do a great job of saving us. Thank you. All right, moving on. Approval of Third Street Final Reading Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one, amending Town thirteen, section thirteen dash twelve dash one, street right-ofways. Had that discussion.
I move to approve the third and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one, amending Title thirteen, section thirteen dash twelve dash one, street right-ofway.
A motion and a second. Most my councilman Cox, second by Councilman Larson. Any discussion? I'll call for the question, Councilman Jay Hong?
Yes.
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 Yes. I don't want. Moving on to item C, approval of third reading, final reading of ordinance twenty-five dash two, ordinance granting to Spectrum City West charter, communication, and successors assigned the right permission and authorize them to construct, install, maintenance, and operate cable systems and designated services area limits with terms of said grant describing the terms and conditions under which said companies may operate. We've had discussion on this before. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion by Councilman Han, second by Councilman White, and has a discussion. Councilman Larson?
Yes.
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 Okay, moving on. New business, approval of Resolution thirteen forty-seven, authorizing submission and grant application to FEMA for the purpose of Lander Volunteer Fire Department. Engine number six replacement on behalf of the governing body of the City of Lander. And then this new business, gonna get a motion and a second, and we'll have Eric come talk.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second?
A second, most my councilman White, second by Councilman Cox. Uh have we talked about this before? It's the new fire truck that we're being? You know these guys, so.
So engine six is a nineteen eighty-nine engine, um, per per NFPA, um, engines are only supposed to be in service for about twenty years. So with this being our oldest engine, um, I applied for this grant last year, was not successful for it, so we're gonna reapply for it this year. Um, we're asking for a million dollars from FEMA, so it'll be a ninety-five percent federal funding, five percent local, so it'll be about fifty thousand, depending on how much it actually costs at the end. The two quotes I got last year were right about nine hundred thousand. So that, that's what, that's the base model, so that's not doing any other specs with it. So I'm talking with the fire department officers, we figure we've got a million with different specs that we would like on that engine.
So what kind of popular options do you get on a fire engine?
What was that? Sorry, John.
Actually, what kind of popular options do you look for on a fire engine?
So like you can do different discharges or pre-connects, like there's an option in there for the front bumper to have a pre-connect there or a inlet from a hydrant. So just different options like that will make our firefighting efforts a lot easier.
Okay.
Chris, I feel like what I heard is maybe different part of reading, but it's probably my own reading. So we're applying for a million dollar grant, about a nine hundred thousand dollar engine, and the match from FEMA is five percent? Like, what are we expecting for our city expenditures here for match and any other?
So we, uh, sorry, ninety-five percent from federal funding, so it's five percent local funds.
Of the nine hundred.
That'll be about the million. So it depends on however much the engine actually totally costs when we order it. It'll be about fifty thousand or less.
And are we expecting that to come, uh, equipment replacement? Where would we seek that match?
It'll be, it's actually in our budget where it's under new asset, so we're actually have it in our budget for this year.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Question, any else? Yeah, wait it as long as we could for you to get back to vote. I'm gonna call for the question, Councilman Hon.
Yes.
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 Moving on, Item B, Approval Resolution Thirteen Forty-Eight, authorizing application for to Wyoming Community Gas for Community Improvement Grant Program. And, uh, and you have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second?
A motion by Councilman Larson, second by Councilman Cox. Move Resolution Thirteen Forty-Eight. Discussion? And I think if I'm right, those are the grills at the lion shelters and stuff, so everybody knows. And North Park is, I think, included in that one as well, so. I'm gonna call for a question, Councilman Hon Larson.
Yes.
Yes.
Just looking one way and sitting the other way, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Item C, Approval Resolution Thirteen Forty-Nine, revoking Resolution Thirteen Twenty-Five Incumbering Lot One, Table Mountain Subdivision for the purpose of obtaining finances for Table Mountain Living.
So moved.
I got a second.
Second?
Motion, Councilman Stubble, second by Councilman Cox. Discussion?
I mean, Meryl, clearly a yes vote on this because there's no other option here. It, I do hate to see this being kind of unwound, knowing that we have to do it. It's, I've let go of the, the dream that we are to be able to build, and instead of living up there, I know that we're not going to be able to build it in the way that we had intended, and this is just one step in that unwinding that we have to do, but it's a bummer.
Call for the question then, Councilman Jay Hon.
Yes.
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 Hey, moving on, Item D, Resolution Thirteen Fifty, adopting the City of Lander's subdivision regulations and repealing all previous resolutions of the same subject and title. Get motion in a second.
So moved.
You second?
Second.
A motion by Councilman Larson, second by Councilman Gan Hon. Discussion?
May I, may I? This was written such that the amendments to Title Four had passed. However, uh, we would hope that this was still passed because we had always wanted to put the subdivision regulations outside of the ordinance so that we can make minor changes to subdivisions, rules and regulations. They're in, in and of itself, they're about forty pages long. So, uh, it's easier to go through a resolution process to make those changes in the future instead of going through three readings of an ordinance. So we would still ask that you would pass this ordinance.
Mayor.
Or resolution.
Um, thank you, Bear. And so, Regina or Adam, it, it seems, seems like we need to amend this then, since, uh, we did not pass the Title Four Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Four Slash Eight. So we just amended to, um, delete the second whereas. Is that sufficient?
I agree.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, then I move that we amend Resolution Thirteen Fifty to delete the second whereas, which states, whereas the governing body has approved ordinance Twenty Twenty-Four Dash Eight Dash Oh Eight, creating Title Four, which excludes said subdivision regulations.
Got a motion to?
A motion to amend.
Man, can I get a second on that motion? If you got a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, my question is, uh, if, uh, if we, uh, vote yes on this, does that mean that we can run under this verbiage until it's changed?
I'm not quite sure the question, but if, if you adopt the subdivision regulations as an ordinance, as a resolution, they will no longer be in the ordinance, and we're also repealing all those other ones that were never repealed in the past.
Okay.
Uh, and it does cause some confusion. A lot of times I'll go, well, I found this old PDF. I'm like, well, that hasn't been in effect since nineteen eighty-six, so.
And I think there's a big issue. There is a motion on the table, and there's not been a second before that question came up, so that's the first issue. Issue number two is I'm a little concerned because if Title Four did not pass, then we may have to amend the ordinance to reflect this, and it can't be done by resolution. So we may have to table this to get more information, to be able to know if we need to do that.
Yeah, and I would agree, we'd have to do an ordinance for Title Four to remove this, those four point nine in its entirety.
So I'm not sure we can approve this tonight. But.
Roll your resolution table.
So, your options are this. There is a motion on the table to amend this, and there has not been a second. Julie can withdraw her motion, go back to the original one, then you can table that to give us time to be able to get more information, to be able to know if we need to do this by ordinance, or if we can do it this way.
I withdraw my amendment.
Thank you.
I make a motion to table Resolution Thirteen Fifty.
I get a second?
Second?
Motion by Councilman Jay Hon, second by Council.
And that'll have to be tabled to a specific date.
To a specific date, you and your specific dates. Let's get your suggestion.
Make it about two months from now.
I was thinking three. I would say March eleventh.
That works. No, no.
I, I make a motion to table Resolution Thirteen Fifty until?
March, please.
Eleventh.
March eleventh, please. Thank you.
Second?
Call for the vote? Councilman Jay Hon.
Yes.
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 All right, moving on, Item E, Resolution Thirteen Fifty-One, adopting the City of Lander supplemental supplements to the Wyoming Public Works Standards specification and details and repealing all previous resolutions of the same subject. Get your motion in a second.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Sent a motion by Councilman Cox, sent by Councilman Stubble. Discussion?
Yeah, can you explain that to me so I might understand it?
Hunter's right there. He's not as fast as Lance on the old case, but he's there.
Regina, did the heavy lifting and kind of describing what this is too. So this is similarly establishing public works standards in a resolution versus in an ordinance too. So there's currently the state of Wyoming Public Work Standards, which we've, we've adopted. This is a supplement to those that are more finite towards what Lander is itself. Um, I'm reading through the resolution. I don't see it tied to Title Four in this, so it, I don't think it's quite as, as similar as, as Thirteen Fifty itself, but uh, it goes into what street cuts look like and what curb and gutters look like in Lander. It kind of, it just shows the details and specifications for what happens in Lander.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, one more clarification, Councilman Larson. While we were working on Title Four, we found a lot of references to the standards and specifications. Again, there's multiple ordinances and resolutions that establish our standards and specifications over the year. We have been operating since twenty twenty-two with what is currently in this, um, resolution, but it was never codified by council.
Okay, any other questions? Call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 All right, moving on to Item F. Approval and authorized mayor to sign pusher garden two-year lease renewal.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Got two seconds again, so we're doing good. Uh, motion by Councilman Larson, second by Jay Hon to authorize mayor to sign a pusher two-year lease renewal. Any discussion? Very self-plantatory. I have a call for a question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Moving on to Item G. Approval of HISF safety training and SDS in the total amount of ten thousand one hundred and eight thirty-eight, an additional of a new managerial learning pathway and pathways in the amount of four hundred for ten employees, at four hundred dollars for ten employees. Go ahead, I'm on for a call for a motion, go ahead.
So this is part of the safety training that goes towards our workers' compensation discount. We did get audited by workers' compensation this year, and I was able to provide not only the in-person trainings that our employees do, but also the online learning management system. Different departments are assigned different numbers, but like bloodborne pathogens, things of that nature that we're required to do every year are in this. The, the renewal amount is the same as it was last year, and we're not required to sign anything, but I wanted to add the management training pathway because we've been asked to provide more supervisor-type training. How do you transition from being a coworker to being someone's boss? You know, how do you have difficult conversations, things of that nature? So for forty dollars for ten employees, we could have that pathway for a year. We also plan on doing in-person trainings as well, but, um, one of the nice things about the module learning is our employees can do it when there's not a snowstorm or they're not being called to a water break. So if there's five or ten minutes, they can get some knowledge if they want to. Any, happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Get a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second?
Motion by Councilman Hon, second by Councilwoman Cox. I'm gonna call for the question, safety training, Councilman Jay Hon.
Yes.
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 Okay, moving on to Item H. Approval and authorized mayor to sign Lander High Water Pressure System Upgrade Phase Three Project in order, order number three, granting high country construction, additional fifty calendar days plus winter, but do no later than April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five for substantial completion. Get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second?
A motion by Councilman White, got a motion by Councilwoman Cox, second by Councilwoman White. This is just to grant them, uh, more time, get it wrapped up. Hunter, do you want to add anything?
Sure. So this change order is, like, like the mayor said, it's just for time. There's some justification in some of their letters of, of why time delays, contractor delays, whatnot, it's because it's costing time, and then we've been very lucky that so far this winter to last as long as they have. We've been pouring the coals with them to keep going as long as they can. But they're projecting, uh, I think it was April fifteenth was completion date on this one, substantial completion date on this, what they're seeking.
Any questions? None?
No questions, Mayor. I mean, for what it's worth, it's disappointing. It's not, um, in city staff, it's in high country. It's, I know, we've heard Councilwoman Cox to weigh in about a change order, but I'll say it instead, it's, yeah. We wanted to see this one wrapped up. It looked like it had been going really positively well, so it's, I'll use it again, it's a bummer. I'll find a different word for the next meeting.
Bummer's a good one.
I, I do have a comment, Mayor, just to follow up with that. The one thing that's nice about this change order is the narrative that's accompanied with it. So that when we, um, are, then we're able to defend or express to constituents as to why.
I can add to it too, is this is our prime contractor for the Lincoln Street Project Two, so we've expressed our, um, concerns that this doesn't overlay into the Lincoln Street Project Two, and they've assured us the two will not impact each other with this too.
Call for a question, Councilman Jay Hon.
Yes.
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 Authorized, next is item I, authorized mayor to sign amendment for owner engineering agreements, number three, an additional seventy-one thousand dollars, additional HDR engineering fees completing the high water pressure system and upgrade phase three project. Go ahead, Hunter, your lights on.
Sure. So this is where the money comes into it, and, uh, this is, uh, part of the funding agency requires having a professional to monitor the project too. So with adding time, we've added time to an engineer to have to sit and watch this project, make sure it gets through to completion on time, and well, on the new time, and, uh, that it's built, built to standards that we're asking for.
Any questions? Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
A second? A motion by Councilman White, second by Council. Mr. Stubble? Councilwoman Stubble? Uh, call for the question, Councilman Jay Hon.
Yes.
Yeah.
No.
Yes.
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 All right, moving on to Jay.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question on that last one, but I should have asked it before we voted, but I was, why wouldn't the contractor be partially responsible for the, uh, cost of the engineering, seeing as how it's their fault they're taking longer than than, uh, what they said they were doing? Why would that fall on the city versus the contractor?
You got a question? Go ahead, Hunter.
Sure, that's a fair question. I asked the same question myself too. I think part of it comes down to, uh, and it's in the verbiage of the rationale for why the delay was, is they felt like it was outside of their project. A lot of projects will have, as you probably know, contingency funds built into projects. We don't do contingency funds on these, so we're less than one percent over the, uh, contract price at this point with this, so it's kind of inherently built into it to go over a bit with projects as they go. Um, I think the, the thing that gave me the most solace with it too is that the actual, um, out-of-pocket the city's going to put forward for a twelve million dollar project is very miniscule with this too. So it's, it's, we're paying pennies on the dollar to make a project happen with this. But it's, it's a fair question to ask.
Yeah, I was, most of the time it's in the contract that, you know, that would be my thought anyway. It's just, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to Item J. Approved and authorized mayor to sign Adura Task Order Number Twenty Twenty Four Dash One, dated December tenth, twenty twenty-four, for the Apron Reconstruction Design Project. And that is at the airport. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second?
A motion by Councilman Cox, second by Councilwoman Stubble. Questions? Discussion? The Drisman, I'll call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 All right, Item K. Ratify, this is a good one, ratify the nineteen eighty-five transfer of a nineteen seventy-five Ford Bronco from the City of Lander to the ambassadors and authorize the transfer title. This came to us, the ambassadors had that horse trailer that you seen. It's going down Main Street and underneath it was a little Bronco that was given to them from the city years past. So we just need to take and make sure we get that, uh, this title transferred back into them, get them in the title, so. Anything to add to that, Rachael?
I don't know why it wasn't originally transferred, but we, no one had a title. They came to us and asked, I applied for a duplicate title. They will only give the duplicate title in the last known entity's name, which was apparently the City of Lander, even though we haven't had possession of it for forty-something years. So we're just asking that this council ratify the transfer that happened in nineteen eighty-five.
So.
It was really cute in the parade.
So. Did I get a motion on this?
Mayor, I'll move that we clean up the skeletons in our closet and ratify the nineteen eighty-five transfer of a nineteen seventy-five Ford Bronco from the city to the Lander ambassadors and authorize the transfer of title.
Do you want a second?
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Stubble, second by Councilwoman White. Uh, call for the question, Councilman Jay Hon.
Yes.
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 All right, moving on to. All right, moving on to item L. Approval and authorized mayor design contract number two, four, five, zero, three, zero. ARPA Health and Human Resource Services, thirteen ninety-four, amending one, decreasing the total amount of the award to one million, four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. And the motion second.
So moved.
Second.
Then most by Councilperson, second by Councilwoman Cox. Discussion.
So question, which, what is this grant being used for or was it used for?
Regina.
Thank you. Um, this is the, uh, Health and Human Services Grant for the Table Mountain Living Community Work. So, uh, it's been reimbursed to date for all of the design services. Um, and we also added that, uh, new Bishop Randall, uh, infrastructure improvements to it. And so the total of what we've already been reimbursed, plus the Bishop Randall contract is exactly one point four eight. And that is, uh, what SLIB is offering us. It was originally a two point six million dollar grant.
Okay. Councilman Hawn.
Yeah, I had a question. You know, they've always had a problem up there at the hospital, you know, water, water. They, they had a water leak or, or, you know, it was in the main line. This, did they ever figure that out? I mean, does this tie into that and help the situation out? Or do you remember?
I can partially answer that question because I, I don't know some of the history you might be talking about. So when the hospital was leased, uh, the hospital themselves were responsible for all of their own services, just like a private property would be. And so they have had continued issues with some of their services and their looping. I do know they had pressure issues and backup issues, which we solved as a city with the high pressure water line changes. Uh, this specific contract for Bishop Randall, uh, increased some pressure issues in the area of the airport and the hospital, but it does not specifically go onto the private infrastructure the hospital built.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, uh, call for the question, Councilman Jay Hawn.
Yes.
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 Moving on to item A, M. Contract. Twenty-four, five, three, zero, ARPA Water and Sewer Grant. Eleven oh five, amending one, increasing the total ground amount of awards to one million, seven hundred and forty-three hundred and thirteen dollars. Get your motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
That most by Councilman White, second by Councilwoman Cox. Questions, discussion? Sorry.
This was good news. Um, when they went through and assessed the ARPA funds, they gave us a million, a li- little more than a million plus for our Lincoln Street project. On top of the three million that we already got. But remember, this is a seven million dollar project.
Okay, call for a question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Hey, I need a motion to move into executive session.
Mayor, I'll make that motion, but can we, um, state a purpose? Is this for discussing litigation?
Litigation.
Great. I move that we move into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation. Second.
That most by Councilwoman Stubble, second. Councilman White, call for the question, Councilman Jay Hawn.
Yes.
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 All right, we're going to move into executive session.
Yeah, I don't think he's new at all. Okay.
Need a motion to my executive session.
Move to adjourn executive session?
Second. Did I get a second?
Yes.
A motion by Councilman White, second by Councilman Larson, come out of executive session. Call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Then there's nothing else brought before our council. This need a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
A second.
Second.
Call for the question, Councilman Jay Hawn. Councilman Jay Hawn.
Yes.
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 Thank you, guys.